The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. Sorry about the delay. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I was just thinking the same thing. If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Eisenach.
Here.
Alderman Sebnek.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
The first time on the agenda this evening, along with our technical difficulties, is a public hearing, and it's regarding the reconstruction of the second addition to Southfield subdivision. And Deputy Director Gordon has a little description for us, and then we'll open it up for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. What we have here is the proposed street construction for the second addition of Southfield. Can you hear me now? Okay. So what we have here is proposed construction, second addition of Southfield. Proposed with this, we'll be pulverizing the existing temporary pavement, installing curb and gutter, new concrete driveway aprons, and then four-inch asphalt pavement. Total estimated cost for this project is $285,776.98.
Okay, so this is just the Southfield subdivision section. We have to wait for the one in Woodland Hills till 5:30, but if anyone has comments about or questions about the Southfield reconstruction, if you could come to the microphone and state your name and address, and we'd be happy to probably answer the questions. We've got no one for the Southfield subdivision. Okay. At that point, I guess we will recess until 5:30, and then we'll start the public hearing regarding the Woodland Hills and Woodcrest Heights subdivisions. Okay, at this point, we will call the second public hearing to order, and we do have Deputy Director Gordon and Director Youngworth here to share with you a little bit about the project, and then we'll open up for comments after that.
Thank you, Mayor. What we have here is the public hearing for the first edition, second edition, and Woodland Hills and Woodcrest Heights subdivision. This is the proposed street construction to include 30-inch concrete curb and gutter, four-inch asphalt pavement, concrete driveway aprons, in addition to non-accessible items of an eight-foot-wide concrete trail and a five-foot concrete sidewalk for an accessible improvements cost of $779,776.31.
Since you have the drawings up here, do you want to go through the three pages of them or not?
Yes, I can. So on the left side of this page would be the roundabout with the intersection of Kernan Ave and Gosling Way. Kind of in the middle of the page, you see the road that goes north. That would be Woodcrest Heights. Continuing to the east, this would be the curve just prior to where Canvas Back, I believe, Lane ties into the intersection going up Gosling Way Court. This would be continuing up Gosling Way Court. The trail, the eight-foot-wide concrete trail, would connect in with the existing asphalt trail that is within the temporary streets of the third addition to the Woodland Hills.
So that drawing's rotated 90 degrees from the previous.
Correct, yes. And then, again, continuing to the north, on the right-hand side, would be the cul-de-sac of Gosling Way Court.
Is there one for Woodcrest Heights, or is that the last one?
No, there should be. Yep. So this is Woodcrest Heights, starting at the intersection of Gosling Way, proposed five-foot sidewalk on the west side of the road. And this would make the connection with the existing temporary asphalt within the first addition to Woodcrest Heights subdivision. And that would be the completion of the project.
So I'm guessing that people would like to make some comments. If you'd like to make a comment, if you could come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and we'd be happy to hear your comments.
Can I ask you a quick favor? Is there any way to turn up the audio on part of hearing?
I can turn it up a little bit more. It's turned up almost all the way now.
I'll sit right next to you, Bill. How's that? I'm Corey Simon, 2517 Gosling Way. First of all, I would like to talk about the assessment. It was kind of vague. It didn't say anything in here about the trail again. I have a couple of comments about the assessment, first of all, because I looked up the numbers that you guys used for 2023 on Third Street. It said $48 for curb and gutter to cut out and replace, and then it was a lesser of a cost to just install curb and gutter. So where it needed to be cut out and replaced, it was $48. We have $48.56 for our curb and gutter, which we don't have curb and gutter. We also have a 10% engineer fee. A lot of that engineering stuff should have been done when they did the road, or at least put in the sewer. So I don't understand why I would get charged $1,900 for an engineer fee now. When I look at the cost of this and I look at the cost of 2023, which the prices haven't gone up that much, on the Third Street, which Third Street, I think, is, what, 44 feet wide? I can't imagine why it would cost almost as much as, what, Third Street? And Third Street's way, way longer. So I don't know if somebody can talk about that. The next thing I want to talk about is obviously the trail, but there's a couple of other things that I want to talk about is, Manassia, since 2019, we were at 27.5 million, or, yeah, 27.5 million in debt. In the last four years, we went up 31%. So you're going to spend all this money to do all this and a trail. I called every single alderperson last week, and I got three people to talk to. Thank you to the three that did contact me. Okay, I went to every single one of your neighborhoods. I looked at every single one of your streets. Randy probably has the nicest, Ted probably has the nicest. Ted doesn't have any sidewalks. All the kids probably walk to Club Esco. All our kids are bused. There's no data from the DOT on how many cars go down there, and I guarantee it's not 500 cars. We have the Atkins subdivision next to us right now. Four years ago, I talked about this. I said that we were going to be going up in our interest rates. The prime this morning was 8.5, so that most likely that Atkins is going to take another 26 years to build. So we're going to have trucks going down there nonstop and beating it up. Kernan is 11 and 1/2 years old. It looks like it's 30 years old. Okay? When they did the Atkins, they said that it was going to take three years. We have the same thing happening that way happened behind Lake Park. Same exact thing. $36 million in debt now. The mayor's leaving with a high debt. And I'm not blaming the mayor, but what I am saying was, when he came in, he started knocking down our debt, and now we are up to $36 million. The other thing that I really want to talk about is our population. We lost 3.99% of our population from 2020 to 2023 at the end. At the end of this decade, most likely what's going to happen is, the village of Harris is going to be larger than Manassia. Okay? I talked to Jim Bodway, and I talked with Doug Bodway and his wife. Neither of them are going to get rid of that land. So it's a trail going nowhere. I'm really upset about the price, because I think it's law. Most of the time, you get bids first, and then you can do a proper assessment. The emails that went back from Corey and Randy that I read, very, very disturbing. I'm not going to bring them out, but they are very, very disturbing. Because you guys think we have a lot more money, it's okay for us to spend more money. Basically, that's what it said in some of those emails. Okay? I am really, really upset about this, because in 2008, my wife and I, the comprehensive plan came out in 2008 in June. We looked at it in 2008 in July. We bought our lot in 2008. The trail was supposed to be north of us. This is the third time that I've been fighting this. This is the fourth time that we fought this. The state trail is now going down Manato Walk. So that's less than 3/10 of a mile away, so why would we need another trail? Another trail of taxpayers' money. Austin's area, he lives in an apartment building with probably, what, seven, eight apartments around there, which has tons of kids. There's no sidewalk to get even to Ninth Street, which all those kids most likely walk to Bata or Buttermore or Manassia High. If this is a safety thing, I bet you I can count on my hand how many times I've seen a police officer come down Gosling Way in seven years. I bet you, both my hands, I can tell you how many times that a police officer went down Kernan. But when you're talking taxpayers' money, and you're talking 31% increase in tax, or in, not tax, excuse me, but in debt, in four years, and we're going to spend $700,000, and then have trucks beat it up because the Atkins is not done? I mean, I would say just put a nice layer of black top down until it's ready. All our kids in our area get bused, or we drive them. There's not a safety issue. We have never had one accident, no kid's ever been hurt. That's what I got to say right now. I'm sure more people will jump on what I just said, but I mean, I would say vote it down, just in the aspect of where we are as a city. We don't have the money. We just don't. These are taxpayers' money. If it's a trail, who maintains it? The city? Or do we? A trail is a city thing. If it's a sidewalk, it's our thing, but I mean, I propose either. That's not what it was said in the 2008 comprehensive plan. My wife and I bought it on good faith that it wasn't going to be there. And this is, like I said, this is the fourth time that we have talked about this. This is my third time. So the people have talked about it many, many times, and you guys are always going against it. Is it just going to keep on happening until it gets approved? Is that what government's about now? I just, that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Corey, did you want to, before you go further, did you want to comment on the estimates that we currently have compared to what the actual assessments will be in the future? Because I think that that's not clear, that these aren't the final prices. These are estimates, what we might, what we're thinking it might come in at. And then I'll give you.
I have a question for Corey.
That's fine. Just do the estimates first, and then we'll...
Okay. So what's included in the estimates in the concrete curb and gutter is the concrete curb and gutter itself, epoxy-coated rebar for over the utility trenches. It's a standard that we do. Lawn and terrace restoration is included within the curb and gutter, and then the erosion control bid item is included.
I guess that wasn't really what I was looking for. Normally, we do estimates based upon last year's price plus, and then when the actual bids come in, then we true those things up, because if we do them at the actual price of last year, and it comes in higher, we have to start the whole process over again?
There's a difference in the curb and gutter that he was referencing there, that's a remove and replace item, so it included the excavation and included the, it's less efficient to pour it, things of that nature, so it's pretty much just a concrete curb and gutter price. It includes no restoration.
It was $15.
And with that is, that's where the price for Third Street was significantly higher. That's the typical price difference in that. In this estimate here, I'm estimating $18 a foot for curb and gutter, and that is based on an estimate that I received from a contractor.
Okay. Stan had some questions as well?
Yeah, because Corey had some issues, and I want those to be addressed right away before everyone else talks, because they may bring up the same issue. So I would like for you to address the, he talked about the old comprehensive plan, which was in 2008. That's an old plan, Corey. Talk a little bit about the debt. The debt, by the way, we just built a new $10 million city garage at an interest rate of 2.3%. Great job, council. I mean, that'll never happen again. So, you know, when you talk about the debt, and then a lot of that debt that you're talking about is accessible debt that comes back to the city, so it's not actual debt. So if you could address those. And I think the big one that he's concerned about is like the trucks, because I would have that concern, too, if trucks were using that. I'm being told that there's going to be an alternate route for those trucks, and that they have to use that, and if they don't, obviously, then you will see more police out there. Also, explain why these prices seem extremely high, because we use a, like the mayor was just addressing, the conservative amounts that we used. Hopefully, you're writing these down. And then I'll just leave it at that. Hopefully, those were most of what Corey had.
Okay. I'll kind of go backwards with your questions. The conservative estimate, yes, they are conservative estimates. I look at other estimates for other recent projects and things of that nature. As an example, for the concrete aprons, we had gotten an estimate for the Water Street corridor project from our consultant, and I used the same per-square-foot price for that, for this estimate. While I was working through this paperwork and completing this paperwork, we received those bids, and that price has come, that price is in $8.50 range. I've seen other places, other communities gotten similar bid items for 750 to 775 per square foot for that. I had estimated $12 a square foot. So I was using something that was similar, again, knowing that it was conservative, with some contingency built into that $12, I anticipate that that price comes down. Asphalt prices, I spoke with a contractor. I asked them where asphalt prices were going. They indicated to me to add 5% to what we paid last year. So that's what I did with asphalt prices. Again, the other things like pavement pulverizing, the unclassified excavation, again, looking at other bids, that's generally, it's probably on the high side, but that's generally in the ballpark of where that stuff comes in. There's ultimately a 15% contingency on all of these costs to try and capture anything that was unforeseen, or a slight underestimate, or a change in the project as we're going.
You don't mind? The other thing he asked was about that engineering charge, which I'm not really sure should be part of this. If you could address that, because he had concern about that.
Yep. The 10% engineering and administration charge is a typical charge that we do with these accessible projects. We've been doing it since I've been here. If that's something that you choose not to include in the assessment, that's your choice. But what that includes is for us to oversee the project, bid the project out, you know, engineering staff time and things of that nature.
Did you have anything else to say, Corey?
As far as the comprehensive plan, that, I'm not overly familiar with that. What I can say is, this subdivision, the Woodland Hills, and then ultimately the Gosling Way area, those streets were all designed and constructed to be offset within the road right-of-way. So the road is actually shifted within the road right-of-way to accommodate the eight-foot-wide path on, in this case, on Gosling Way on the south side of the road. So the road is shifted to the north, so that once the eight-foot-wide trail is put in, there's still a roughly seven-and-a-half-foot terrace within that area.
And that was part of the original plan when the plat was approved in...
Roughly 2003-ish area.
I didn't expect it to go quite this far, but we can answer the questions, if you want to.
So just kind of repeat the question, just to touch on the conference plan. Again, there was statutory requirements that came into place that required all communities to have a comprehensive plan by 2010. Comprehensive plan, again, according to state statute, is considered to be, again, by definition, a guide to physical, social, and economic development of a local government unit. So again, that 2008 copy does show a trail system through this, and again, looking at that trail system, we did go back and look at all sorts of additional plans much farther back, including corp plans back to 2001, which would have been prior to any of this being plotted. And our best inclination, because again, we were not here at that time, is that, again, these are defining east-west connections, if you will, but they should be developed at the time of looking at the plat considerations and having those discussions. And I think, as Corey noted earlier, staff believes this road was offset to the north. The trail was not put into the subdivision, the original Woodland Hills subdivision to the west, because of the same argument of it did not go anywhere. So again, we're looking at, starting to make these connections. We have recently put in the Province Terrace Trail or Boardwalk, and then the Nature's Way Trail Connection. So again, we have come a long way, and we're starting to really kind of make those trail connections. But again, the comprehensive plan in itself is just a guide for where we would like to move forward in those connections. And that's why, again, where it's located in the 2008 comprehensive plan looks to us as a straight line between point A to point B, which means it's generalizing an east-to-west connection of that nature. Again, this subdivision was done in 2008. The newer subdivision that we're looking at today, the first addition of Woodland Hills, the original Woodland Hills subdivision was done in 2002, 2003, and if that trail connection to the north would have gone through there, there would have been a designated easement. There's no designated easement on that plat. And further, the second addition of Woodland Hills, which would have been the one that wrapped up, also does not have any type of easement that would have cut through there. So again, I personally was not here at that time. I know a lot of us wasn't, weren't, or in these positions, and that would be our understanding of what it is shown on the map today.
There are other people, I'm guessing, that would like to comment?
Bill Murray, 2521 Gosling Way. I just want to start with Mayor Merks. I guess how I operate is I try to operate old-school, if you will. I saw you at, I want to get these initials right, ECWRPC, when they wanted to showcase the three different options. They had that meeting, and I came up to you directly, and I said, "Okay, if they choose a different route, would you go with their plan?" And you said, "Yes." Then when they presented the plan, the plan right here, I came up on the podium and said, "Okay, Mayor Merks, now that they chose a different route, you made mention that you would go the alternative route, or go the route that they would choose." And so I'm uncomfortable, and hurt, really, that this has turned out to be what I perceive a governmental affair. Our neighborhood doesn't want this. And you disappointed me, because nobody, not one of you spoke up when I brought that to your attention. And here I come to find out, nobody told me, here I come to find out, there's $45,000 in the budget for a sidewalk. Here I come to find out, my bill's $26,000, and I see an email thread with Corey and Randy. It's like you don't even care. "Oh, it's just five years, you just pay it off in five years." To come to find out that my square footage is not 726, it's 655, and then if that trail goes through, well, then that takes part of the apron, so it should be around 450 square foot, that's $3,000 bucks. $3,000. This is real money, everyone. It's real money. And here, yes, we're not totally $36 million in debt. We are in debt. At $36 million, that's over double the amount per person in Appleton. And where I grew up, per person, we're over $2,000 ahead, because if you go $36 million divided by 17.5 versus $94 million divided by 77,000, you'll come up with a number, it's 1022 for Appleton, it's over $2,000 per head in Manassia. You could look that up. Okay? With all respect, the main thing is, is the way I grew up, there's a thing called needs, and there's a thing called wants. And your email correspondence, Corey, with Randy, you're sitting there saying, "This is a vision." I get that it's a vision. It's a beautiful vision, if you will. Our neighborhood doesn't want the vision, and we're telling you, we don't want the vision. And the committee, by the way, that did all their survey, and knowing that this path was going to take place, because several people from Manassia was on that committee, they still chose to go a different route. They chose to go a different route. Here might be why. Here's a survey they did. I don't know if you guys saw this. I just saw it on, I just saw this on the computer, okay, of when they did the survey, when they're looking into, looking into the results of this neighborhood. Number one, I get a pin. Trails do not belong in the neighborhoods. We already voted no sidewalks. We certainly do not want a pathway. There are other options ruining, there are options, other options, than ruining the neighborhood with a pathway. There's 10 likes, one dislike. There's 10 likes, 1 dislike. There's another pin, and I'm talking about all like Gosling Way up to like Kernan, then that's it. There's obviously more. But there's another pin that says sign/ designate this High Cliff feeder route. So that was a positive, except for you have 1 like, which would have been that person making that comment, and 9 dislikes. So our neighborhood said, no. There's another one that says, this gap needs to be filled. Very difficult to get to Lake Park Road safely by bike. 2 likes, 14 dislikes. Our neighborhood's responding to the survey. Why do you do surveys if you're not going to use them? Another one, by the way, I just picked this up today, so I just made screenshots. If anyone needs them, I got copies in my car. All right? Trails do not belong in the neighborhood. We already voted no sidewalks. We certainly do not want a pathway. 10 likes, 1 dislike. Another pin that says designate this High Cliff feeder route, where it went up the road a little bit. No likes, 7 dislikes. Keep the trail on the main arteries. A pathway within the neighborhood is way too intrusive. 8 likes, 1 dislike. And there's one last one. Sign designate this High Cliff feeder route. 9 dislikes, 1 like. Trails do not belong in subdivisions. Anywhere you look, these kind of trails are on the main roads, like 10, 114, or Manitowoc Road. Our roads are plenty safe, walking, biking, as, what's your name, Corey indicated. Our roads are plenty safe, walking, biking on roads in the neighborhood. 8 likes, 3 dislikes. So there's a couple more, but it's like, okay, I know this is a dream. You know, you said this is a vision, Corey, in your email that you're talking to Randy with. And it is a vision. But guess what? Things change. I know that you routed the road. Sam, you talked about that to me years ago, that you made the road purposely for this trail. Things change. And right now, from what I understand, you correct me if I'm wrong, either while I'm speaking or after I speak, that Manassia is paying, what, 20% worth of this path, this trail, of what they're coming up with, the trail to High Cliff, if you will? All right? So why are we double dipping? We're already spending the money on a trail. Over the committee, how much money do we put towards a survey? I know it was a gift, a grant, but how much money do we pay for it? And they went through an extensive study to say, well, it might be Manitowoc Road, or it might be 114. None of it was in our neighborhood. None. We already voted down sidewalks in the neighborhood. It's still going to be a path to nowhere. As Corey indicated, there is a property that's going to stop the link between Lake Park and Atkins. And that property is not owned by Manassia. And it won't be. All right? So I guess I just want to look at, is this path really necessary? We're getting one. And I'm implying, everyone, that's, it's Alderman people, if that's what you call it. Do you call it Alderman for females? Okay, sorry. I just want to be respectful. But the main thing is, is I get Randy and your email to Corey, already said it's going to be a 1 to 7 vote. That hurts. That hurts when you indicated that in an email that I end up seeing, that I had the email thread. It hurts when we're not being told what's going on in our neighborhood. That we, I had to find out, because someone was measuring some things around my property. That's how I found out. So I know that there's seven of you that I'm looking at that already want this trail. I know that this trail is very, very nice. I also know things change. Things change. And the committee that we paid six digits, I'm assuming, to do a master survey, and their opinion is to say, sorry, the trail should be somewhere else. So I'm asking that you be respectful to the neighborhood. I'm also asking that you be respectful for the survey that was done. We spent a lot of money, it was via a grant, of a special project. It is a special project. We don't need sidewalks in our neighborhood. We don't have 500 cars going up and down our street. In fact, Randy, you said, we didn't even do a count, because it's like, it's not even worth doing a count. We don't have that. We just don't. My next question is of not really caring about, well, the 26G's out of my pocket. I understand I signed up for a road. I signed up for a road. And I know that. I had no control when that road's going in. When you say, when you say, Corey was saying that 80% occupancy, we've had that for the last three to five years. If this was done three to five years ago, I'd be saving $8,000. $8,000. And then on top of it, you have an engineering fee. When here's an engineer, he's getting paid, isn't he? You know? And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be disrespectful with that. I guess I'm getting a little passionate. But, you know, it's just something that, why? Why? Why can't we be fiscally responsible? Why do we have to spend the $45,000 when already a committee said, there's two different routes that are better than this one? Why? Who can change their mind? I know some of you can, because right now, the facts are saying in a survey, we don't want it. The survey people came and said, you don't need it. And that was six digits of money that we spent on that. Six digits of money. Now, if this project was done three to five years ago, when it should have been, I saved $8,000. But because you guys didn't plan properly, I'm out. Unless you start creating an arrangement, which is what you probably should, there should be some sort of arrangement, because I'll tell you what, all of you voted for the Atkins project, but it's been an eyesore. It's not going to make it. Well, it's going to be about 20 years before it fills in. But it's not the three years that you guys all voted on. So we have these grand visions, grand visions of 90 homes in the Atkins subdivision that have been a huge tax win for Manassia. Things change. We also have a big plan of saying that there's pathways that are going to be going through. It's going to be beautiful coming from Jefferson Park all the way through. It's going to be a beautiful thing. You've got to have vision, as Corey wrote to Randy. Why do have vision? And so it's spent over six digits worth of money that said, the trail should go elsewhere. The trail should go elsewhere. And oh, by the way, if you do put it through our neighborhood, that's saying that, that apron of mine is going to be a heck of a lot less. A heck of a lot less. So I'm at the mercy of you guys making a mistake by waiting until now to actually do our road when it was needed three to five years ago. Needed three to five years ago. But because of the decisions that you're making, you're looking at a person that there's probably $8,000 out of my pocket, just from that alone. And many of us are going treason when Corey says, well, you've got five years to pay it. It's like, well, yeah, I do, but it's still $26,000, when it should have been probably around 16. That's big. And from what I understand, Corey, you used the word concrete, not blacktop. Okay, I asked because there was a phone call to Mayor Merks, and he used the word blacktop. So I am done for an hour, and it's one where I just want to say, things change. Things change. Okay? Things change. And so hopefully, I hear your heart say that I could change. Because right now, let's be fiscally responsible and quit racking up the debt. We're losing population, so what happens if we lose more population? What happens to that debt? What happens is something catastrophic, that they're talking about all these cyber wars happen? What happens if a community, a part of our community moves out like, what's her called? What's her name? What's the name of that new subdivision that they left Manassia? What happens then? Where does this debt go? I don't know. Things change. We don't need a path.
So I want to let everyone have an opportunity to speak. I do want to make it clear, though, that this is not the High Cliff connection trail. This is local pedestrian access. Does anyone else wish to talk this evening?
Yeah. Bill Murray, 2521 Gosling Way. When we had the conversation, you put both together. And so when you said both together, you said, I will go along with the committee, and now you're not. Okay? And that I'm uncomfortable with, because I play the book by trying to be as honest and integrity-ridden as possible. And when someone looks me in the eye and tells me that, one-on-one, I expect people to honor that. And that was not honoring. So you just sidestepped by trying to do the clarification. Your words still matter. And please understand, things do change.
Okay. Is there someone else that would like to speak?
Hi there. I'm Pete Rotier at 945 Woodcrest Heights Drive. I would like to have a few comments, but they are specific to Woodcrest Heights Drive. I'm not sure if everyone is aware of it, but there's another development to the north of us that has begun building homes, and there's some slots that are still empty. And for the last two years, we've had a great deal of dump truck, cement truck, and digging machinery traffic up and down that road. So if you're planning on putting in a new road, it's going to get dinged up fairly quickly. Also, I have a question is, I see I was assessed about $7,000 for an apron for our driveway. We already have one. Is, are that, is that going to be removed and a new one put in?
Typically, yes.
Do you have an apron if it's replaced and charged?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Can you say that again?
Yeah.
No.
When did that change? If he has a cement?
That? No. The aprons in this area, Alderman Sevigny, are temporary aprons, because it is temporary pavement. We do not replace aprons. We require, we tell the people that they're temporary aprons when they're put in, and we, they're replaced at the time of construction.
Do you consider your aprons temporary aprons?
I didn't.
They're temporary aprons.
I think so, Scott.
They're temporary aprons.
The city didn't put in our apron.
Because the aprons don't match the existing curb and gutter, or the proposed curb and gutter, excuse me.
So they were put in wrong?
Because they're matching the existing temporary two-inch asphalt pavement. They're temporary aprons.
I want to clarify what I said there.
This is why we shouldn't be having a back and forth.
I need to clarify, because in my neighborhood, for instance, we did DePere Street. If they had a blacktop driveway, it was replaced with a blacktop driveway, and there was no charge. If it had concrete, it got replaced with concrete. So this is, you know, I've been on the council forever. This is the first time I've ever heard this. Temporary...
This happened throughout the ponds, throughout most of our new subdivisions on the east side?
Yeah.
So go ahead. I'm sorry for interruption.
The only thing is that I'm also wondering if they do put in blacktop, new blacktop, and it has to be replaced in three or four years because of all the truck traffic from the remaining construction? Would be assessed for that as well?
Streets are assessed when they're initially put in in Manassia, and then after that is the responsibility of all the taxpayers in the city as they get replaced over the next 20 or 30 years, yes.
So that's, would be coming out of the property tax revenue?
That would, yes.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there, are there others?
Kevin Retler, 970 Woodcrest Heights Drive. Want to echo a couple of things from Mr. Rotier, that on Woodcrest, there is a subdivision, Sandpiper, and right now, there's still a lot of empty lots there. And I see, I work from home, and every day, trucks going back and forth, so very concerned about if anything going in, that's going to be destroyed as soon as it gets put in. The other thing, big surprise on the apron thing, I've been living there for nine years. Put in apron, there's no way I was going to sit and have gravel for nine years. So that was all put in with the assumption that it could get mirrored up to it. Couple years ago, about a two-foot section got cut out and blacktopped for some reason, and nothing else got done on it. So that was obviously a concern of, you know, the cost put into it. The other thing, too, just the road in and of itself that we have right now isn't even maintained. So the extent of putting in something else that's new that we're paying for, that we know is going to kind of get destroyed right away, would be very concerning. The other thing, again, I don't have as much at stake as some of the other people about the sidewalks and the trails. But me and my wife are avid bikers. I mean, we bike, between two of us, by 12,000 miles a year. And obviously, going down our roads are of no concern to me ever on my bike. But like, when I get out to Manitowoc Road, okay, I'm fearing for my life. So I think there's just instances like that, that, again, to everyone's point, that I think there's different things that can be done from a safety standpoint than worrying about putting potentially sidewalks or a pathway in a fairly low residential area as far as traffic's concerned. That was it.
We missed your name, sir.
Mine?
Yes.
Kevin Retler.
Thanks.
Hi, Melanie Simon, 2517 Gosling Way. I have my notes on my phone, so apologize. First, thanks for your time tonight. I work in Manassia. I'm on a board of a nonprofit that's based in Manassia, so I am definitely vested in the city and the continued success of the city. Wanted to address a couple things on the street assessment. I'm going to try not to repeat too much of what's been said. But I just wondered, and I don't know if you guys can answer me as I ask these questions, but how many of you have driven out to our neighborhood to see how much building is still going on? Couple. Okay. You may have noticed, as people have said, there's still two subdivisions that are being built. One does not have another entrance. The other one does have another entrance, but you can't get all the way up to the top of the subdivision from that entrance off of 114. So essentially, then what happens, right, is everybody's coming down Gosling or Kernan to get there. And I'm not convinced that if and when that gets opened up, that people are going to use it. Because as of right now, I don't think it shows up on a GPS, so people are still very likely going to come down Kernan or Gosling. And if I'm coming south off of Kernan, I'm probably not going to come out to 114 to take a left back into that subdivision. I know the comments been made that we'll put a sign up that says no truck traffic, which, while I very much would appreciate that, I'm not convinced that that's going to do much to stop construction trucks when they're driving in at 6:00 AM, 6:30 AM, 7:00 AM, to get those, to get those houses built. As people have said, that Atkins development, I think, was supposed to be almost finished at this point. My understanding is he's sold 12 of 90 lots. So very likely, there's going to be building going on there for quite some time. And I don't know that it's a good use of tax dollars to potentially have to redo that road very soon. Obviously, the first one, right, we're going to pay for that. But next one, we're not, we're not, everybody's on the hook for that one. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the proposed trail and sidewalk for Gosling Way. Just wondering how many residents in our neighborhood have asked to have a sidewalk put in or have a
This isn't a question to answer, but we can talk about those things afterwards.
Sure. Or even in the city, how many people have said, hey, I really want a trail down Gosling Way? Because I'm having a hard time understanding why there's this big push when clearly, the residents that live there that are most likely to use it every day have said, right, we're perfectly fine with the way it is, when residents that don't live in the neighborhood apparently aren't clamoring to have a trail that goes through this neighborhood. My expectation, or my guess, is if they're using the neighborhood to walk, and we do get kids biking, people walking their dogs, those kinds of things, they're not feeling unsafe about it if nobody has reached out and said, gosh, right, we really need to have sidewalk or trail in that area. As my husband pointed out, there are a lot of areas in the city that I would guess have a very high density of children due to their proximity to a park or proximity to a school. And if I were to focus where we could have the biggest bang for the buck in getting a trail or a sidewalk, it would be there. As he said, our children typically are, I think virtually all of them have accessibility to busing when it comes to school. So very rarely are you going to see them having to walk very far because most of them are taking the bus versus, I work at S.T.I., so I work right down the street from a school, lot of foot traffic there. Now, there happens to be sidewalks there, right, but as you look at other parts of the city, I would guess there's a lot of kids walking into that school that don't have sidewalks to walk on the entire way. I think my other concern is the lack of transparency. This is clearly a hot-button issue within our neighborhood. As someone said, I think this is the fourth time we've had to have this conversation. I would have expected, and I would have hoped, that if this was still on the table, there would have been very clear communication to those individuals that were impacted for them to get involved from the beginning. The only reason we knew this trail was even going to be discussed tonight was because when we looked at the assessment and we pulled up the plan, it came up there. It was not included in the assessment information that was sent out. Nobody had reached out to tell us that in fact was going to be voted on tonight. As people have said, we were under the impression that with the High Cliff Connection being routed somewhere else, based on the feedback that came up, there was not going to be a trail or a sidewalk through our neighborhood. And it's very, very concerning from a transparency standpoint to have to kind of dig through all of the stuff within the city minutes to find out, in fact, there's an eight-foot concrete trail that's being voted on tonight. And not a single member of our neighborhood, to my knowledge, was asked for their opinion, was involved in any of the planning, was told that this was going to be out there. So it's, regardless of how you vote on this, I hope you vote no on it, but I hope you do think about transparency from a government perspective and having your citizens involved, right? We're all here because we care about the city, we care about our neighborhood, and we care about it being successful and able to flourish in the years to come. But that only happens when it's a two-way street, and we're not surprised by stuff happening without being involved in it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Patrick Galore, 2513 Gosling Way. I'm a relatively new resident of the neighborhood, just by a couple of months. And as Mrs. Simon just mentioned, my first knowing of this was a couple of days ago when my neighbors brought it to my attention. I had not seen or written a plan of this. I just want to start off first with a clarifying question, make sure I heard it right when the original presentation was made on this. Is it sidewalk plus recreational trail?
Just trail?
Okay.
There's sidewalk that goes up Woodland Heights Drive and trail on Gosling Way?
Okay, thank you. Most of my neighbors have kind of said a lot of things I wanted to, but just to kind of bolster their position. The way that the neighborhood is designed right now, it's very tight turns. You know, by design, it slows traffic in the area. As of today, there's really only one way in and out of the neighborhood, so it's not a throughway, and really never will be with the new subdivision that's being built to the east. I know there'll be another access road there, but again, it won't be a throughway. It'll only be used by the people that live in that, in those subdivisions. So traffic will continue to be very lull. And I guess I have a question about, you know, was a study ever done on safety in the area? You know, is this recreational trail going to provide additional safety for the pedestrians? Because with the low traffic volume and the low speeds because of the design of the curvy roads, I don't really see it being a high risk to pedestrians. And we heard from another resident that says he feels perfectly safe riding his bicycle on those roads there. That's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Mitch Augustine, 928 Woodcrest Heights Drive. I've been a resident of Manasha for going on 27 years. I know a lot of people in this room. I'm a teacher in the district. I work with tons of kids. I've been an advocate for Manasha ever since we moved in. We built, recently built the house on Woodcrest. It would have been nice to know that there's going to be a sidewalk running down there when I built this house, because now with the sidewalk cutting through the front yard, it certainly makes a big difference to the sightlines and appearance of my home from the road. I can only think of one family on Woodcrest Heights Drive that has young kids. And so I really don't see why that sidewalk has to be in that particular neighborhood. Curb and gutter is one thing. Getting stormwater out of there is one thing, but I don't understand why there needs to be a sidewalk in that particular spot. I think it's unnecessary, based on everything that these other folks have said with dog walking and bike riding and adults just, you know, walking as such. It's a non-issue. Now, there's also, it's funny that I talk in safety, and I see the speed that some cars carry down Kernan, and we're worried about that particular sidewalk as opposed to some more patrolling of Kernan. I feel like we're getting taken advantage of, based on the houses that we've worked very hard to build, and now it's, you know, it's coming out of our wallets. There's other, there's other roads in the city, Woodland being one, that does not have a sidewalk. So I'm under, and Clovis Grove is directly connected to that neighborhood. The closest school to our neighborhood is, what, Janet Berry? And that's in the city of Appleton. Even Kernan going into Appleton doesn't have sidewalks on that stretch. So I'm unsure as to why that sidewalk needs to be there. And I hope that you all consider the requests of the taxpayers of that, of that area, who I feel pay their, definitely their fair share of taxes for this city. So thank you for your time. Thank you for the work that you do, but I think that this is a mistake.
Thanks. Is there anyone else? If there's no one else, well, but if you do it quickly, you've already had two options, two opportunities.
Yep, and more information came out, so. Again, Bill Murray, 2521 Gosling Way. I request that you look into what you were saying before. Everything that I've done and looked at stated that there is replacement. For me personally, it's cost me $8,700. And I already put the concrete in, now I got to do it again. So I would request, whether it's a delayed vote, whether it's another conversation, but that's what I would request.
And with that, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move into the common council agenda. And I don't know if the council would like to move, or is this, this is on council agenda? This is on council agenda, right? Or is it in Board of Public Works? Just trying to remember if it, no, it's on here. Yeah. So if the, okay, if the council so desires, we could move it to the beginning of the agenda. Otherwise, we'll go through in order as it's printed. Okay? Did you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. So we have report of department offices, department heads, staff, and consultants, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, Mayor, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through F and Communications G, H, and I.
So motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comments on other matters of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on something other than the street assessments tonight? No? Okay, we'll move on then to the minutes to approve. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the minutes of the common council of 3424.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Did you have a question, Tom? I'm sorry.
I thought it's lost.
Oops, hold on.
I thought in the minutes I saw a misnamed street, and now I can't find it. Wait. You had said that the Water Street project would run from, the wall would run from the, I can't see, let's see here. Well, it would run from the Railroad Trestle to Railroad Road. I think that was supposed to be Taco Street.
Where did you see that on here, Tom?
In the minutes. I read that.
That's under item two, Water Street Corner Project?
Yeah. Yeah. Further expansion of the shore wall update. There will be a new shore wall running from the Railroad Bridge to Railroad Street. That should be Taco Street, just for the change. Thank you.
Okay. We'll make that correction then. Did you get that, Valerie? Okay. Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll, we don't need a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion stand carries. Item three is the Board of Public Works recommendations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
No, we have a special joint common council board in Public Works in library minutes from 31224, Mayor.
Sorry. Did you make that motion for approval? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So motion, a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion on that set of minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three is the Board of Public Works. Did you, Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for a payment that was recommended from the Board of Public Works at our last meeting. This is for Faith Technologies Incorporated. This is for the Public Works Facility Solar Expansion Project that we recently did with monies received from Winnebago County as a grant. This payment is payment number one of $306,152.45.
Is there a second? So motion, a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, eight, zero.
Is there a motion for item four? So Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, again, the Board of Public Works at their meeting recommended to award contract unit number 2024-02. This is the Washington River Street signals. This is going to be an upgrade to those signals. This has been on our radar for probably a good seven years. Finally, received also additional dollars from the state. This is going to be awarded to Vinton Construction Company in the amount of $202,628.42.
So motion, a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, eight, zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of March 1st through March 14th, 2024, in the amount of $1,056,809.18.
Is there a second? So motion, a second by Alderman Hammond. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, eight, zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first one is ordinance three. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to move to council ordinance 0324, an ordinance amending Title 12, Chapter 1 of the Municipal Code of Ordnances, Park Regulations, Pets in the Park, introduced by Alderman Ted Grady.
Is there a second? So motion, a second by Alderman Hammond to approve ordinance 324. Discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
We did receive minutes. There wasn't, you know, a lot there. So I guess Ted, being on that committee, I might be asking you or Megan some questions on this. All you know, I'm a dog lover because of my dog, and that evolved some pictures. I probably share too much, but I am not completely in favor of this. And in the past, you know, the big push was, can we at least get them on the trail? And I said, you know, that seems fair because you're walking your dog, and we could set up the bag stations and things like that. My fear is, is if we open this up, and maybe these were conversations Ted that they had, is that all of a sudden, just because it's on a leash, people are going to let their dogs off the leash, and they're going to say, well, they're allowed in the parks now, and that's my fear. And then also, the enforcement issue. I know there was a little bit of that conversation. I don't see it being enforced at all. I don't know, Chief, you're planning on being on patrol on that kind of issue? Yeah. So you'll have to sway me here, or Megan, I'm just, why is this coming forward? Because to me, it's probably from a handful or one or two individuals that really want to be able to walk their dog in the park itself. I think it was fine that we kept them on the trails.
So included in your packet, I put together a memo that kind of.
And I asked for unanimous consent to hear from Megan.
So included in your packet is a memo kind of outlining the steps of how this came to be. Probably over the last year, the park board started to look at this, that staff at the park board looked that there were different, people are looking for different uses, that people really think that pets are an extension or use pets as an extension to their family. They're looking to integrate them in their daily life, whether it be going to the park to watch a baseball game, or, you know, just walking through the park or generally enjoying the park. So pets are viewed differently than they have many years ago when ordinance was created. Before taking any step, the park board decided to do a survey. So over the summer last year, the staff conducted a survey. We had 712 people respond to that survey, so quite a large response for a survey. 69% of those people were dog owners, and 78% of those respondents were Manasha residents. So quite a hefty amount of people were Manasha residents. And 69% of the total survey were in favor of changing the ordinance to something that opened it up a little bit more. Not to everywhere in the park. As you can see in the proposed ordinance, there still is restrictions, that it doesn't include playgrounds, it doesn't include facilities or pavilions, areas like that, or athletic diamonds. So if you think of like Coslo, excuse me, Coslo Field, or some of our athletic spaces, they would be limited to there. So it would really just expand it to green space.
How are they going to know the difference, though? That's my concern.
Well, and it's going to be signage, just as we don't have signage right now all over our parks that say only stay on the trail. We really don't. I mean, with every ordinance, every change, you don't necessarily put a sign out there. Some of it's just general knowledge, some of it is us as park staff letting people know, you know, enforcement, you know, and Chief Thorne can speak to any sort of enforcement of, if there's a call, if there's issues like that, then I think that would be when it's addressed. But, you know, right now, there isn't a ton of abuse related to that, and when it talks to waste within the parks, we haven't seen an extreme amount. And that's just an operational change that we make. If we see changes with that, where there is more dog waste, we might. If we see changes with that, where there is more dog waste, we might, you know, change the location of our waste receptacles then. So it's just changing operationally. You know, personally, I don't think there would be a strong abuse of it as far as people misinterpreting that, that it then opens it up to be a dog park where it becomes an unleashed dog park. That is not the expectation with this change.
I just don't think people will see the distinction and it would open it up. Like, I mean, there was no dissent on the park board, was there, Ted? No? Okay.
Do you want to speak to enforcement?
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I still have an enforcement issue that's concerning to me. I mean, some people love dogs, some people don't like dogs. Dogs might be aggressive at some point, at least by keeping them on the trail. That allows the safe areas for people who don't really care about the dogs or whatever, don't love the dogs. So I think that best is to keep them on the trail. We don't have to worry about having Police Chief Nick on Doggy Do watch and see who doesn't pick up your dog poop. I'm sure we can't identify the dog poop once the dog leaves the area. So those are things that I'm concerned about, just the enforcement issue. I don't... That's a big concern for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Megan, is there a way to put some kind of pamphlet together when people get their dog license so that they would know all these upcoming rules and those that don't get licensed? Well, there's an easy catch right there. Thank you.
Certainly, I mean, information could be shared with those when dog licenses are issued. You know, there can be information on our website. You certainly can put things out via social media. I think there's many methods in order to get the message out if that is, you know, a concern. You know, it's still the expectation, the leash length is defined within the ordinance. That's not looking at being changed. So you're still looking at a person in total control of their pet within five feet of that leash. You know, like I said, it's fully defined. So whether it be on a trail or a green space, like when you're talking about people who are not pet friendly or not, that really doesn't change as that leash length is still defined. You know, they should be within five feet of their owner. So whether it's on the sidewalk or on a trail or on some green space, it's not that they're running loose throughout the parks and still should be well within the control of the person with the pet.
Thank you. Yeah, I think Director Sackett kind of hit it on the head there saying, just because they're in the park, you still got to be on a leash. The dogs still have to be on the leash, whether on the trail or attending beers on bagel or whatever function might be happening. So that part, they'll have to understand, as my brother Tom stated, that maybe when they do get the license, that there's a pamphlet that kind of reiterates this. Because you'll see dogs even on the trail in Jefferson that aren't on leashes. There's dogs running around sometimes when I go through there or check things out. And as to the ordinance, the enforcement of it, I know that you can only really, if you're going through the park as a police officer and you see it, you can do something. But awareness of other people should call and let them at least know what's going on so we can monitor this. And then if it's being abused, we take it away. So it's just like other things, too. So just keep an open mind that way.
Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding this, I think it's like anything else. We give it a try and have the honor system of letting people have the opportunity to do that. And I recognize the concerns with code enforcement. And I guess Chief Thorne, would you be able to elaborate a little bit from your perspective? It sounds like you're supportive based off of the memo, but could you just share a few thoughts with us?
I think... Thank you, Alderman Hammond. I think a lot of it comes down to public education on the forefront. So as mentioned, pamphlets, social media, information, and allowing our CSOs and police officers to get out there and provide some common education about what's now allowed versus what isn't. The other part of it as well, this isn't a significant change as opposed to other communities. This is commonly seen in other communities and it is supported by the police department.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'd just like to say that I think we should give folks more opportunities in the city to be able to enjoy it how they want to and the parks are for folks to enjoy. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one concern about the ordinance, and it is in section E, near the end, where it says that other animals, as part of other events deemed appropriate by the Park and Recreation Board or the Director of Parks and Recreation may be approved to be in the parks. So the part about allowing the director to approve what kind of animals can be in the park is of concern to me. And I'm going to explain why, and then I'll proceed. As it stands, the Park Board, the Park and Recreation Board oversees, governs activities that happen in our parks. And while I understand that the Park Board at this time may very well and can trust Megan with, or I'm sorry, Director Sackett, with these responsibilities, at the same time, by adding that to this ordinance, the Park Board is ceding their governance of the parks to a staff member. And one of the beautiful things about the way our structure is set up is that community members have a say in what happens in their parks. And when we take that away, that is of concern. And so I'm going to make a motion to amend this ordinance, to remove the words or the Director of Parks and Recreation from section E.
Is there a second to the motion?
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Sure. You need to... Can I have her?
So my question being, under E, I think this is just for petting displays. I don't think this is... I can call them, say, hey, I want to bring my squirrel to the park. Would you approve it? I think this is for like ceremonies and like weddings. And can we get clarification on that, please?
Is that true, Director Sackett?
Yes.
Is that the intent?
Correct. And Attorney Stru could speak to it as well. I mean, it's really for, related to rentals of facilities within our park. And, you know, for example, if a child's having a birthday party and they want to have a pony ride or something there, that's what this section of the ordinance relates to. And so instead of bringing those individual requests to Park Board each time one of those would happen, and I'm not saying that they happen often, but as it's written, I would have to bring those individual requests to the Park Board to have them have a pony ride or something in conjunction with a rental. Looking to put that language in there, one, in essence of just being, I would say, customer service friendly in timeliness to bring those requests. Sometimes, you know, we allow rental requests to come up, I believe it is, up to, you know, a week or 10 days before they would rent. So that would be less customer service friendly. Sometimes, yes, we have to deny those requests based on restrictions like that. This would just be more customer service friendly and giving me, as Director, autonomy to make those decisions, instilling the best interest of, you know, the usage of the park is what I would look at that. That's the reasoning for putting that language in there.
Thank you.
So what's on the... There's a motion on the floor. There is not a second right now? Is there a second to Director, to Alderman Nichols' motion at this point? I do not see a second, so the motion dies for lack of a second. Did you have anything else, Alderman Nichols?
I'll just say, for that reason and that reason alone, I will not support this ordinance change. Thank you.
Kirsten, you had your light on, too. Good. Here.
Yeah, I was just wanting to say about the potential issues of the dogs not being on leashes and stuff, because it is specifically stated in the ordinance that they have to be on that leash, like that still isn't an optional... That isn't up for people to decide to take their dogs off leashes. So I personally wouldn't be super worried about the parks becoming like dog parks, just for that reason. And I mean, as a dog owner, there's no way I'd trust my dog to not run off in an unenclosed park anyways, so... And I think a lot of people can agree with that as well, so I'm in favor of this ordinance
I want to give everyone a chance to speak a first time before I went to the second group. So Alderman Sevanek, that's why I've been going through the...
Yeah, I noticed that. That's a first.
I tried to do that.
That's all right. That's fair. So anyways, I do understand what Alderman Nichols was trying to do, but I also agree with you that maybe that's a little different, the way it's drafted and that it pertains to just special events. But I'm not sure in the ordinance either if it's defined well enough, and you'll have to help me again, Ted. If, for instance, where you say it's not allowed, it's so pets are not allowed on playgrounds? What determines a playground? The whole park is a playground. Athletic field or in park shelters? So you were talking about beers on bagels, so they can't be in the shelter part of it. Is there something else that we're missing here?
As far as language, that is the language that was in there previously as far as defined locations where they weren't allowed. Typically, playgrounds are defined by that surface area underneath an actual playground. So I mean, there's a definition of a park and a playground is amenity within a park. So it's usually clearly defined, you know, with...
Someone might win a court case on that one, though. So it goes to... But it should be, I think, spelt out a little clearer. Here's a zinger for everybody. I'll tell you what, I'll support this because it's tougher than our current ordinance. And the body here may not realize this, but we don't even have a leash ordinance. So if I wanted to take my dog, like I do every night, for a walk, I don't have to put a leash on him. So this at least is a tougher ordinance. You know, I know Randy has issues with some dogs and, you know, some people have a fear of dogs. And if it's not on a leash, they're very scared. So all the comments here were really good. I guess I will support this, but I think it needs to have some tweaking. And I think, you know, Alderman Nichols brings up a good point. Maybe she can tweak what she was looking at a little better because I agree with her that it's this body that makes those decisions, not a director or a park board. So that's it.
Alderman Grady?
I'll just end with this, too. I just want to see if I can persuade Alderman Nichols to change your opinion because based on the animals or pets or pony rides or what Director Sackett was trying to explain, we don't want to have this every time we come back to the Park Board. Because we meet once a month. And we're... So it's Alderman Sevanek was saying to you that maybe to understand item E of this ordinance, and I think you're thinking of as in general, the director can override anything, and we don't want that. But it's just to specify these special events, so I hope that can help. But that's just my explanation of it.
Ted, before we vote, could you and Randy switch mics? You guys are opposite mics, so that's Randy's mic and Randy has your mic. And when you vote, I'm not sure how you guys are going to vote, so I want to make sure that it doesn't come up backwards on the screen. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven one.
I guess it didn't matter either way. Okay. Trying to go back up to the top here again. We are on item three, two, resolution four. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to forward to council R424, a resolution for recognizing financial contributions to the Jefferson Park Playground, introduced by Alderman Ted Grady.
So motion and a second by Alderman Grady. Seeing no other... Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. While we're on this resolution, I just want to say that it's really, it's great to see that we live in a community where folks are willing to chip in and work towards efforts that really benefit the collective. So I like the multifaceted approach where the private-public nonprofit sector can kind of all come together to accomplish good things. So I just wanted to make that statement regarding this resolution.
Alderman Sevanek?
Again, like my request in the past, I think when you have a contribution of this type, a letter should come from the council. So I'd like to have another letter where we send a thank you to the individuals.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item three is resolution five. Do we have a motion? This is the resolution authorizing public improvements for the Southfield subdivisions. Alderman Sevanek?
For the sake of discussion, I'll move that we take up R524, resolution authorizing public improvements, levying special assessments against benefited properties, a second addition to the Southfield subdivision under section 66-0703, the Wisconsin State statutes introduced by Mayor Marcus.
Is there a second? So motion and a second by Alderman Nichols? Is there discussion? So again, this is the Southfield, so this is Grassy Meadows and Breed Court, just those two streets? Is there a third one? Okay. Alderman Nichols? I'm sorry. Alderman Nichols, and then I'll get back with you, Alderman. If I can make it work, Alderman Repella.
I'll yield to Alderman Repella first.
Okay.
Very much, Alderman Nichols. I guess I can support the road and the curb and gutter being put in here, Corey, but I'm just a little bit concerned if we could have a better estimate on the costs. And I know you've done some estimating, whether it be on the Gosling Way site or this. I guess I'd like more concrete numbers. I know that you've gone around and asked the business, the contractors roughly what their cost would be. And I know that you've kind of added some numbers or a few percents to that, so you'd come in high and the bill is going to be kind of less. I guess I would be looking for more concrete numbers that would require the bids to go out, but that's my only concern with this program. Corey?
Did you want to comment on that, Director?
Thank you. These are just estimates.
Right.
So by moving the... Passing the resolution, if we underestimate the project and the project comes in higher, then we have to stop the project and come back through the public hearing and all of that stuff, you know?
Yep. So it's better to be higher on the assessment and then...
Correct. They're conservative numbers. I wouldn't say they're over the realm of what some of the unit prices will come in at. They are conservative. And then there is the 15% contingency to kind of catch slight changes or modifications that we have to do with the project as we proceed forward. I don't anticipate modifications or... or changes to the project the way we have the plans drawn. Generally, we're, we're pretty close with that stuff, but there are areas, if we run into areas that are soft that we have to over excavate and things of that nature, we have to cover that. So that, that's where some of that 15% contingency comes in and helps cover that.
Okay.
To get final numbers, um, we, we have not done the bid prior to the public hearing and, and it's always been the estimated, uh, preliminary assessment number.
Okay. So I think what he's saying is these are estimates. The assessments come in at actual cost.
Correct.
So they'll be adjusted for the actual cost. And the next step in this is to get the bids and the bids are going, bids books are going out. We're going to post that when, I would assume, fairly soon.
Baring the outcome of, I think, these conversations, yes.
Sure.
But final, so everything is measured. Construction is fully completed. All quantities are measured, you know, exactly what was put in. And then you use the bid cost. So it's actual costs, actual square footages, actual material installed is what is billed. These are, these are assessments. So just want to be clear that this is not what you're going to see. It's, it's purely an estimate.
So once the bids come back, they come back to come council. And if they don't come in out of the place the council is comfortable with, they can be rejected at that point as well. So you'll get another kick at it at that point as well.
All right. Thank you. I still have one more question for you, Corey. Um, I walk this route and through the trail behind, uh, the subdivision a couple of times a week. The Breed Court and Grassy Meadows extension have gone in probably within the last two to three years. They didn't have to wait eight to 10 or 12 years on, on Gosling Way or anything for a new street. So these people have been actually graced with a nice actually blacktop overlay right now. That's in excellent condition. Um, so one thing I'd like to do is see if we can, just because costs are astronomical. And, uh, I do know that these are smaller lots than many of the houses on Gosling Way and, uh, the other streets, Woodcrest Heights. Um, I was just wondering, maybe this needs a, an amendment or something. But, uh, to lessen that 10% engineering cost and waive that. So I know that's well within...
That's, that's not my decision.
Okay.
That's, that's the council's decision. I'm only following past practice and this is what we've done.
Okay, understood.
For every subdivision that we've constructed new streets and since I've been here.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Um, that will then, could I make an amendment, Mayor?
You can.
Okay.
I was going to do it.
Oh, I beat you to it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make amendment to, uh, this, uh, Breed Court and Grassy Meadows subdivision extension that we waive the, the 10% engineering costs for this, uh, section of our, of our, uh, uh, budget. So...
R five, 24.
For, oh, I gotta get the number right. Yes. R five, 24. So I'd like to waive the engineering cost for, uh, that one. So...
It's a motion and a second. And I'm trying to, Alderman Stru, Alderman Attorney Struve? What concrete, where do we put that in the, is that enough motion that we don't, then we'll just amend it?
I'm adding a motion, adding a motion, proving this with the modification of the , the, the...
So the report now went to the 10%. As indicated in said report.
I think we all know what it's going to do if it passes, but I don't know how we change the resolution. Has that, something that's changed afterwards?
I think we should add...
Well, that's the other question. Are we asking for...
Minus the 10% engineering cost.
So that I just...
We could modify this report then. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah. The next one is...
Yes.
Number three is kind of...
Okay. So we're gonna, is it in there in someplace?
Yes.
Okay. We're, we're going to take a vote on the amendment at this point unless there's any other discussion on the amendment. An amendment is to not include the 10% engineering costs within the special assessments. Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if we're opening up a can of worms here with this 10% fee based on, we're looking first of all to pass it. And then when the bids come in and everything else, it might be lower, hopefully. And then every time one of these assessments or things come out, just like the, the crowd here tonight for, for the next vote, we're going to waive this 10% engineering on just about all of this stuff? I, I, I don't know. I, I'll put that out just for debate and just saying, hey, I think we might be setting a precedence here and, and might slow down some of the processes. I don't, it's just my concern.
You have something about the amendment, Randy?
Yes, I do. I guess I'll answer Ted's question. I do know that our, our city is kind of landlocked and I think there's only five or six more streets that possibly could be put into our seat, or into our city. Um, so I, I do understand his concern about, uh, we were setting a precedent that we'd be waiving 10% of the engineering costs. Um, but I realize how expensive the streets are right now. And I do know, um, that's, that's just kind of a, uh, just a thanking, uh, thanking for the people who live in the city of Manashe. So I guess it's a 10% tax cut on that. So that's where, we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Anyone else have discussion on just the amendment? Alderman Grady?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to hear from Laura and Corey. What kind of ramifications do you see with changing this?
From my perspective, um, you know, Alderman Repala did, uh, did touch on the, there's not a lot more subdivisions that are out there that we are doing. I do recognize that these prices are high. Prices are, you know, very high. Um, I don't anticipate them coming down in the future. Um, would it be unreasonable? Um, I, I don't think so. That's my opinion.
I would like to add that the engineering costs are internal costs for, so a new subdivision comes in, a developer is driving this, right? A developer, I don't want to say pays for it, but all the costs really are, are on the buyers, the developer for this, not necessarily the city. And those costs are built in because those are technically to be associated with the development, not the city as a whole. But on the other token, um, it is internal staff time. We're not charging out for that time. It is, it is purely our time for inspections throughout construction to make sure that the road is being put in to our standard, developing any plans that we need to assemble, um, all of the administrative costs that are associated with it. So just to give perspective on what is included in that and, um, whether that helps make your decision one way or the other, um, just to provide you that information as to what, what is a factor in that number. But it is standard...
But remember that, that also increases our levy costs.
It's going to, that's general tax base that that goes, that number goes on to. So it's either assessed or it's on your taxes.
Uh huh.
Thank you, Don.
Sure. Any other questions or comments about the amendment? I'm sorry, I can't quite see your light from there, Kirsten.
Um, yeah, Laura, I had a question about the, I mean, what's, what do we see is possibly happening if, if we do, I mean, I know you kind of touched on it, but, um, if we end up not including this 10% engineering fee, what is it gonna, hmm, what sort of ramifications specifically would that have? Like to our staff? Would that increase over time or, um, like to our, to our city staff? What would happen?
It's not going to change our operations. We would operate the same for a subdivision regardless of, of how that money is allocated. Our staff is still going to do the job that needs to be done.
It would just change the budget.
Just impact to the budget as to either assessed, it's an assessed value or it goes on the tax base.
Just one more thing to add. Um, a number of years ago, we, we reconstructed Airport Road and part of that agreement with Fox Crossings is we oversaw the project, we designed the project, uh, we administered the project and we did charge Fox Crossings a 10% engineering admin charge on. Just, I...
Okay. Seeing, and, yeah. And Nina also charged us the same 10-ish percent when we did Abbey Street. So, so on the amendment, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you foresee, um, a budget adjustment needing to come forward in the future? Or is it too early to tell?
I think we would probably take a look at when bid prices come in and maybe reassess it at that time.
Reassess the situation?
Reassess, correct.
Thank you.
If, if there are numbers that would be affected by it. We already have our set wage splits per se. Um, I would have to dig deeper into it, but the bid prices could, will dictate that to a, an extent.
Thank you.
Okay. We are on the amendment. If we could take a roll call vote, please. It's not right. You ought to start it again and see if it, there we go. Okay. Now we are on the motion as amended and we'll have to revise the resolution slightly in order to make that happen. But I don't think we need to do that right here. So the, the report from Public Works will be modified to match the reduction of the engineering fees.
Correct. Yes. I, I, yes, that, that would be correct.
Do we have other discussion regarding the resolution? No? Seeing no further discussion. If we could have a vote on the resolution as amended.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Moving on to item four, which is resolution six. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, for discussion purposes, I'll move for R six, 24, a final resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties. This is the first and second addition to the Woodland Hills and Woodcrest Heights subdivision under section sixty-six point zero, seven, zero, three of the Wisconsin statutes introduced by Mayor Marcus.
Is there a second? No seconds? It's a motion and a second. And now discussion. Do we have discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
Um, I think we need to do the same for this particular one. Um, for the, uh, we have to add another amendment to take out the engineering cost for this, uh, R six, 24.
So there's a motion to not special assess the 10% engineering costs for this resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman Nichols. Do we have discussion? We should probably do a roll call vote since we did it last time. I'm guessing the result might be different, but not sure.
As amended?
Oh, sorry. I shouldn't have said that, but, yeah, just the amendment to remove the engineering. Okay. So now we have the motion as amended on the floor. Do we have further discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
Yeah. One thing I wanted us to be able to discuss, we didn't talk about, the gallery brought it up a couple of times. And something unique in Manashe that our surrounding communities don't have is what's called a deferred assessment policy, where you have an extended period of time to pay this. And it's not just five years. It could be up to 10 years. And so if, I would ask unanimous consent to hear from either the director or the, the commissioner to address this particular issue and explain it a little differently. Uh, I believe the first five years, it, it can be deferred and then it could be an extended, but there would be an interest charged because of the period of time. So...
Yes, thank you. Um, so our policy is that, um, there is deferred five years. So if paid within the first five years, there is no interest tied on to or associated with the, the assessment. Um, at the end of five years, that amount is divided in five equal installments and required. And I believe it's placed on the tax bill, um, at that time for the next five years, for a total of 10 years of payment. Uh, the second five years does have interest, uh, associated with it at 1% over what we would borrow money in for.
Okay. So that is unique to Manashe. If you lived in other communities surrounding our area, you're required to pay it right away. So, um, I think that's a, a good policy because of, you know, your concerns. You know, this is a big hit to the budget. You don't expect it. Um, you do or are supposed to plan for it because you know at some point a street would be going in. As some of you had stated, you realized that was coming at some point. Um, because I still do have the floor, I do have a lot of concern again about a few points. Number one, I still have a lot of concern about putting the road in, but yet having these other vehicles, as some of the people stated, heavy equipment coming on those. And I know our policy was something like 80% if, if it's built up, but then we have that, as mentioned before, we don't have another road coming in from the other way. So could you address how that's going to be handled? Because if we're going to be putting in a new road, I don't want to be seeing cement trucks and everything else going down those streets. Um, and signs are, are not going to stop someone either. I mean, they, they might be helpful, but what we would have to do, I believe, is the development to the far east, there has to be, all those contractors have to know, they cannot come down these streets. So I'd ask unanimous consent to hear from Corey or Laura?
Go ahead. Um, thank you, Alderman Sevigny. Um, yes, we, we've talked about this. Um, I know a number of years ago it came up on when we were planning on doing this, uh, reconstructing this street. At that time, we had a lot of construction going on on Gosling Way Court. Um, also the third addition to Woodland Hills, which is Canvas Back, which is now what you're, you were referring to as Atkins. Um, that was being constructed at that time. Um, and we did not have a secondary outlet. When it comes to installing curb and gutter and constructing these roads, um, there are going to be times when there is a, a curb machine and a concrete truck... to be times when there is a curb machine and a concrete truck and and associated vehicles that are involved in placing this curb and gutter, that traffic's not going to be able to get by that that piece of equipment or that operation. And that's where the secondary access is important. I did hear a comment that there is an associated secondary access. The way I understood that, that they mentioned or insinuated that that is off of 114, that is not correct. We are not allowed to access 114 now that this development is in. We can't use that farm driveway as we've referred to it in the past. It would be Kelly Lake Drive that would be the secondary access. So I've talked with the developer and the contractors working on that phase. Last summer, fall, they completed the construction of the lower portion of the Atkins Lake Cottage Court subdivision. The roads are all shaped, but the gravel base has not been placed. The gravel base is anticipated to be placed roughly by the middle of June. And then with that, we would piggyback off the back end of that and then start the construction, the curb and gutter construction of like Gosling Way, Gosling Way Court, Woodcrest Heights.
Okay. And then throughout this discussion, there was a discussion of a pedestrian path or trail which would be concrete. That is not being assessed. That is being paid for by everybody in the city, correct?
That is correct.
So that's understood.
That is correct. The subdivision was originally set up to include an eight-foot wide trail. The road has been offset, so we're we are just following the plans that, you know, have been brought forward in the past.
So when these were available for sale, when the property owners purchased them, were they made aware by the developer that this was to be put in?
That I can't see. I don't believe.
Wasn't that part of the agreement of purchasing those properties?
I don't believe in that portion of the subdivision that was done. I believe it is being done in the Atkins.
Okay.
Third addition, Lake Cottage Court. They're actually signing a document that was not required previously in this area.
No, 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 but I meant as part of the plan, they knew that.
It was on the original plan, correct?
Yes, okay, yes. The last part, and hopefully I'm sorry, guys, I'm taking up your time. Okay, so, so the other part that I have problems with, and I think the gallery caught this, was those what's called temporary aprons or whatever you're, what are you calling them?
Temporary driveway aprons.
Yeah.
With, with the.
Are there just some, or are there, does everyone have a temporary apron?
Temporary aprons within these areas.
Yeah.
Yes.
And why were they allowed? I mean, don't we inspect that? Don't we have our inspectors that come in there and say, wait a minute? No, this cannot be put in this way, that this apron has to have, like, if you see in other places, they got actually a sidewalk as part of that apron that goes through. Weren't we responsible for policing that or inspecting that?
So again, because they're temporary, we wouldn't require them to place a dedicated sidewalk section if they chose to put in a, you know.
Did they know that, that they were putting in a temporary one then?
We've indicated to people that they are temporary aprons. We do not require.
And I'm sure some people purchased the home after they were put in too, maybe some of them.
That could be the case.
Yeah, that, that part I have trouble with. Because throughout the city, in fact, when I talked about the pier, we actually just put in those driveways at our cost. And even if they were blacktop, we put in all concrete.
So in a reconstruction situation, where we are going into an existing street and removing the street, we're tearing out the old curb and gutter, we're redoing the base, things like that, we have to rip out the driveway aprons, and that is included as part of the cost of that project.
Okay.
In this situation, because it is a temporary area, we have not, we have not replaced those aprons, you know, for quite some time. We haven't.
My feeling was, is that, of course, Randy made the initial motion on the other one, but the reason, part of the reason for me looking at the 10% on the engineering and was to help out the property owner for this situation, because I know that, you know, when you put in this concrete, it's expensive, and now we're tearing it out and then putting in new and then charging them. This way, I just felt would be a fair balance. Otherwise, I think the engineering costs should have stayed in. That is my logic behind trying to help out the property owners with the aprons. I just, I think we need to do a better job of, in any of our new developments that come up, like you've mentioned Atkins or whatever, that they be aware that there's, if they're putting in temporary, they're going to be assessed for an apron in the future, that they will have to pay for that, because I'm not happy about that situation. Now, I see other mics on, so.
I guess I did want to comment a little bit because we had that same problem with the Cypress condos that went down Villaway, and people wanted their driveway aprons in before the street was done. And we did tell them that if they did that, that they would be paying for them again. So we have notified people in the past that if you want to put something in, put it in a thinner concrete or an asphalt because it will have to be replaced, because you can't match that driveway apron to the curb very easily, and then you end up with. So it is something that we have notified people in the past. I can't say for sure on Gosling or those areas, but I know in other areas we have done that. Alderman Repel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not too happy about the Kelly Lake Drive second access, but I still got other things I'd like to discuss anyway. I'd like to make another amendment, and this is to eliminate the sidewalks on Gosling Way and also the, that's the eight-foot, I think, trail sidewalk, concrete, whatever you want to call it, and also the five-foot sidewalk on, what is it, Woodland, Woodland Heights or Woodland Hills? Woodcrest, thank you very much. Like to make amendment to eliminate both the sidewalk and the trail on both of those streets.
There's a motion, there's a motion and a second to eliminate sidewalk and trail pedestrian access on the project.
And the reason is, yep, the reason is, quite honestly, the, the traffic isn't there, the pedestrian traffic isn't there, the people don't want it, and also the vehicle traffic isn't really there. So I know in my subdivision, nobody's been killed, nobody's been hit. So I mean, I guess that's kind of a silly reason to answer it, but it's been safe so far. And so I'm going to push off, I'd like to make, to eliminate the sidewalk and trail. Thank you.
Does anyone have discussion just on the amendment? Kirsten?
I'd like to say that I agree with Randy or Alderman Repel on this. I, I think, as we've all seen tonight, this is obviously not something that the neighborhood wants or needs. I've, I've been down in that area, I've walked that area, I've ridden a scooter in that area. It's, I feel perfectly safe walking around in, on the sides of the street, and I think cars do have a tendency to go specifically slow, slower in those areas specifically because of the windy roads. And, I mean, that is part of why it was built the way it was. So obviously, this isn't a popular idea in the neighborhood. The people would be, who would theoretically be using it the most have said pretty blatantly, we won't be using it. So I personally don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to put this cost on the community if they openly said that we don't want it.
Director Schrader, did you have a comment too?
I would like to just add, before this, this vote would come through, certainly, staff does not make any decisions. We work on what the vision is set from this body. There has been an east to west trail connection dating back to the 1990s. We have invested a lot of money into a lot of other trail connections. We talk about being fiscally responsible. Why have we spent all that other money if we're not going to finish the project we started? I feel for the neighborhood, I do, and I'm coming at this strictly professional of, we have laid out a vision. Year after year, we have updated court plans, comprehensive outdoor recreation plans. Year after year, we have updated comprehensive plans. We have continuously moved forward in this regard of an off-street trail connection through this neighborhood. And however this votes, again, staff does not make these decisions, but voting this down does have implications that I want to make sure each and one of you consider. We did mandate Atkins to put the trail connection in. What are we planning on doing to that one? Again, the comprehensive plan, we just updated in 2021. Are we proposing to bring that back to amended? The court plan was just updated in 2020. That will have to be redone this year. Are we asking staff to come back and take that plan out? We just spent lots of money on the Nature's Way Trail Connection. That had a lot of conversation, a lot of negative feedback. I think a lot of people do use it. Again, as a community, sometimes we do have to make hard decisions of a larger connectivity. And I say this with, again, utter respect of the neighborhood, I really do. But as, my job is to continue this, this vision that you have all laid, and I just want to make sure, if, if the vote gets put down, that's the direction we're moving, that that's, staff's moving in that direction. And what, what is that next step? Are we ripping those other trail sections out? Are we amending these plans right away? How, how are we to, to answer how this vote goes? So I just want to be very clear about that aspect of how we move forward, because again, staff does not make decisions. When we're talking to developers or property owners, we're moving forward with the visions that are in place, because that is what the taxpayers pay us to do in these regards. Thank you.
Tom, did you have a comment on the amendment? Yeah. Okay, that's on the amendment.
Well, I'm not a big sidewalk person, and I don't have sidewalks in my neighborhood. My brother doesn't have sidewalks in his neighborhood, but I'm not going to speak for him. But I did drive out there. I go down Kern quite a bit, but this time I went and drove all the arteries connected to Kern, and there's not one sidewalk out there. So I don't really understand why we're putting a sidewalk in one section. It doesn't make any sense to me. A couple, maybe it was two years ago, we had a group come in from Willow Lane in Manasha, where the sidewalk ended halfway down the block, and they, now they wanted to put in, they were going to continue the sidewalk, and people came in and complained, and they won. We didn't put that sidewalk in. So I don't see a reason for the sidewalk at least. Thank you.
Did you have a comment on the amendment?
Director Schrader?
Sure. It was on the amendment.
Okay, it's regarding the amendment. So if the council were to move forward with voting not to include the trailer, the sidewalk, what is, I guess it's a two-part question. What's the financial implication if a future council were to want to bring forward putting something through there? And the second part of that question is what is the ramifications to the vision as a whole for connectivity?
Initial financial, I mean, that's, I think that's hard to, to put a number on. Like we said, we, there's a trail connection in the Atkins subdivision. This body with, through that development agreement said you have to put that in right away. That is one of the problems we have today. Why it wasn't in the Woodland Hills immediately was because it didn't connect anywhere. We have it to the east side of, excuse me, the west side of the Appleton Water Plant, next to the Southfield subdivision that we just approved. Again, we're in conversations, have been in conversations with Appleton Water Plant about a new subdivision to extend through there. And at that point, once that connection would be through, we would envision that connection back down to this point. So again, you could, in theory, off-street from, from this subdivision all the way to Jefferson Park. From a vision standpoint, I, I do think it is, it's concerning from a staff's perspective of where are we, where are we going with, with a lot of this? We've, we've been here a lot with planning documents, with discussions, development agreements, and that's, that's, I think, the biggest concern from our perspective of, once we change course or change the vision, that then does cost money. Okay, thank you.
Was he, did you have a, okay?
It's more of a common, thank you, Mayor. I feel for everybody that's in the gallery, and I think total about seven, eight of you came up here and spoke and with your concerns with the sidewalks and the trail. Looking at all the parcel numbers here, there is about 40 different parcel numbers, and even the one gentleman that had the survey, it seemed like to be about 10 to 15 respondents on those surveys. I'd hate to, I don't know how to word this. I, I wanted to lean in the direction with you guys, because I felt how heartfelt you were about this. But what about the other, there's 40 parcels total. So I always try to vote in favor of my district of the majority of what my district likes. And the majority of these parcels are not here. So it's hard to lean in one direction and vote. So I guess I don't have a question, that's just my comments to kind of decide how I'm going to vote towards this. Thank you.
Alderman Repel?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, I understand your, your frustration, and one thing, they can, like I said, if we eliminate the, which I'm hoping we do, we eliminate the sidewalk on Gosling Way and, what's the other name of the street? Help me.
Woodcrest.
Woodcrest, thank you. Woodcrest.
Randy, don't call it sidewalk.
Okay, all right, path, trail, there's a whole bunch of names for it. Once, once they get to Atkins subdivision, they can still take his trail, they can still connect wherever that path goes, they can still connect to the trail that's over in by Lake, by, that's going in off of Cristella, and they can still get into going up to the community first. So they can still, the trail can still be there, just that it's going to be a walking trail through Gosling and the rest of the subdivision, Woodland Hills, those type of streets. So they can still walk on the streets there because of not as much traffic, and it'll still work. So the vision will still work even though they don't have the path in front of their house. They can walk on the street, so, thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you. Kind of pondering back and forth on my vote on this, but based on the amendment and based on where these individuals do live, it's a quiet neighborhood. It's not a busy area, there's not a school around, there's not that traffic. So I don't understand why they can just use the road to bike on or whatever. People don't even use the sidewalks for the intentions that sidewalks are around the area. Everybody's jogging on the roads, biking. You don't see people biking on a sidewalk or a trail project in this area, so it's kind of still happening in. So it's kind of still having it on here how I'm going to vote on this amendment.
So I guess one other comment. About three, four years ago, we did pass a complete streets plan for the city and ordinance, and that did require us to consider all modes of transportation on every street that we were looking at. This is part of the plan that we were looking at other modes of transportation. When we did the final streets for the ponds, we did put sidewalks on one side of the street. It was the same conversation, they don't go anywhere. Then we put in the trail on Lake Park Road, and I don't know how many of you drive down Lake Park Road. There are always people walking down that trail, and the way they get to that trail is on the sidewalk to the trail. So if we never start putting in pedestrian access, we can never get pedestrian access. And of course, you're not going to see pedestrians when you need to walk down a street that you don't perceive as safe. So what I'm hearing tonight is our vision is we want kids walking down the middle of the street because we don't feel that we should put in sidewalks. So that's my vision.
Alderman Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor.
You had your opportunity, you had your opportunity before the meeting, and now it's the council at this point.
I guess I share sentiment with my colleagues of just kind of being in a rock and hard place because you all are the folks that live there, that is your homes. And it sounds like many of you feel frustrated and like things have been murky at best, it sounds like throughout this process. But it also sounds like if we were to abandon mid-course this vision plan, it would have fiscal ramifications and it would not have the vision at large of the connectivity for the community. So I guess I share the same regard that this is a really tough decision, and I just want to thank all of you for coming and sharing your viewpoints and just getting up in front of the council and the mayor and the city staff to talk about how this impacts you and where you're at with it. But I also want to thank city staff for their time, efforts, and due diligence of doing what previous councils have wanted them to do. So I guess I leave it off that this is a tough decision, and I think everybody in this room has their community at best interest. But it does sound like there's a lot of folks that don't have concerns in that quieter neighborhood with getting around and getting on bikes and going for walks.
Alderman Sevanek. At this point, it's, at this point, we don't know if there would be a trail anyplace else at this point. And we're, hold on. If, if we need to have the council make the conversation at this point, that's, that's why we had this meeting. If you don't respect the council making their decision, then we'll recess the meeting until such a point that we do respect it. Alderman Sevanek.
I have the floor. Thank you. So, Bill, you probably made some of the best comments this evening. I appreciate you opening my eyes to some of these things, especially the link between the Bowdway property. To me, that's a biggie. Corey, you were here before. That was, that was the reason I voted against the sidewalks the last time, because there's sidewalks that go to nowhere. Just so you know, though, and I've told you guys this before, I am very pro-sidewalk. I think sidewalks clean up a neighborhood. I think it looks trashy, even though you probably have some of the nicest homes in the city. I think it looks trashy when there aren't sidewalks, but that's just my opinion, you know? The sidewalks, I'm sorry, I yelled at Randy for calling them sidewalks, but the pedestrian trail system is not an assessable item. I wanted to bring this up in case you didn't know this. If it were eight-foot, the city clears it, so you wouldn't be clearing it, we do that. If it were to be a five-foot sidewalk, you would have to clear it. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. But I keep going back to the last time we went through this process. You know, everybody here is making up, making very good points. But what I haven't heard is, from this group, is what's so bad about having that trail go through there? Especially when you're not being assessed for it. Is it because you don't want people going through your neighborhood? Pardon?
And again, the gallery had their opportunity to speak before.
For me, the why might be because I thought we were trying to link up our community. And now that we're putting this road in, this is the time you do that because of cost. Because if you do it at another time, the cost is going to be more, not just because it's later on, but because you got all the equipment there already. So I think that's what staff is thinking. Hey, we need to put this in while we're putting these roads in. So anyways, I still have a big problem with the linkage. If that linkage was there, there's no doubt I'd be voting 100% right now pushing this for this trail to go through. Looking at my notes, excuse me. Oh, and then I was confused, Bill, and maybe you can talk to me later, about the committees, the two committees that made these decisions or whatever. I don't know what those were or whatever. So.
Is that all right? If, so there was a lot of discussion about the High Cliff stuff, can I provide just a quick update so we're all on the same page with it?
Sure, I'll move to unanimous consent to hear from Sam.
So the, there was a feasibility basically that kind of kicked off in 2021 to look at a High Cliff Trail Connection. So that six-figure dollar amount that was 100% funded by the community foundation, that was not taxpayers' dollars. At that point, they were looking at two routes, basically the Manitowoc Road Route as well as the path through the neighborhood. We, they did kind of complete that process. And based upon those comments, again, from the regional High Cliff Trail Connection and in a biker standpoint, so if somebody's, if somebody like the gentleman that was looking to bike to High Cliff, you know, get on their road bike and bike to High Cliff, that's a pretty long bike ride. The neighborhood aspect just doesn't work for those types of individuals. They would, they would take a different route, a more direct route anyways, because of all the curves and the stopping as it was kind of noted. The feasibility or the committee, the High Cliff Trail Connection is still very active. They just announced the commencement of the feasibility study in January of this year. What the 20% that I believe Mr. Murray had mentioned, what that covers is the feasibility study, they applied for a grant, and you needed 20% local dollars in to continue that feasibility study. So with that grant, that 20% that you're seeing is, again, the community foundation stepping up and paying that for the community. So at this stage, there isn't fiscal dollars in from the city of Manasha in that High Cliff Trail Connection. So I just want to be very clear, and I think from the feasibility standpoint, they are looking at the Manitowoc Road and the 10-114. I know that was not on, I think, the original kind of scope that they were looking at. There are a lot of challenges on both sides from a public infrastructure standpoint to construct either one. Real estate, individuals that aren't going to want the trail, ditches, wetlands. So it, I would assume it's going to be quite some time before that project actually comes to light. Megan, did I, excuse me, Director Sackett, did I touch on everything correctly there? Just to kind of clear there? So just to reiterate, Director Sackett, it's a park director, just kind of reiterated that is a regional trail system, not necessarily that local connection.
Did you have anything else, Sam? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. The part of the conversation that sticks with me, and I first heard it on Friday night when I talked with Mr. Simon, was the folks who did their due diligence when they bought their properties to know that a trail wasn't going to be in, along their, in their property. And so I understand that things change. And so I just want an explanation of how we got from 2008, when, when people started buying property and looking at the comprehensive plan, to today, 2024. And things have moved a little bit. There was a trail in the 2020, or in the 2008 plan, there was a trail called out. However, what we're talking about today has moved slightly. So just an explanation of the history, where we started, and how we got here.
So, and you're speaking specifically to the bicycle and pedestrian facilities kind of future plan within the comprehensive plan, is that correct?
Yes, I have the 2008 Park and Recreation Facilities Plan, and then I have the 2021, most recent, I believe, Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Comprehensive Plan Update. And I think we all have them in front of us.
Certainly. So I think, as I touched on this earlier, you're looking at those generalized east-to-west connections. In the, I would say the biggest difference between the two, in the 2008 comprehensive plan, it does show kind of that connection from the Southfield subdivision or Grassy Meadows, the west side of Appleton Water Plant, kind of going through the Appleton Water Plant property, down Woodland Hills, kind of down Kernan, and then, and then kind of cuts off north of that Gosling Way. So a lot of the folks, again, on Gosling Way. So looking at that, again, there's a very straight line on a, on a surveyor's 40 section line that goes straight from Kernan to Lake Park Road. This is a very similar line that we would see in the old, old comprehensive plans or court plans, that we did not have any streets or development in that area. And again, I can only understand or try to understand of why that was not placed on Gosling versus going straight through that neighborhood. What I can say is that in 2001, or, excuse me, 2002, the Woodland Hills subdivision was approved. So that subdivision included the lots on the east side of Kernan Avenue there. So where that, where that street, where that trail connection kind of veers off Kernan and goes directly to the east, in 2002, when we would have reviewed that plaque, we would have had to have put in a pedestrian easement. So that pedestrian easement was never put in, as well as we kind of talk about kind of the design of the street being offset to the north. So in this regards, again, our assumption is this is, this is an error by placing it slightly to the north. I think you'll start, it's easy to have those small errors pop up. And I would look back at that and say, that was likely an error by not bringing that down Gosling and keeping that to the north. Again, the remaining plaques that were done, the first addition of Woodland Hills, as well as the second addition of Woodland Hills, none of those indicated a pedestrian or an easement through that area of what would have needed to been approved at that point to allow that trail connection down that path or that line.
And the other big difference that I noticed is that in the 2008 plan, they are, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, they are labeled on-street routes. And then as we move towards the future, they become proposed off-street paved. Am I reading that correctly?
Correct.
So help us understand, oops, sorry. Help us understand why that shift happened from on-street to off-street paved.
I think as a community, we're constantly growing, right? The perception of Manasha today is not the perception of Manasha five, 10 years ago. And the reason that is, is because we are focusing so strongly on safety, from police protection, to your place on the water, to a safe place for anybody to gather. We have millions and millions of dollars going into Jefferson Park and Water Street to really improve our park system and our public thoroughfares to make sure that that next generation does have all those amenities to move forward. And a big push of that, as the mayor had mentioned, you know, with complete streets and trying to make sure there's a safe off-street trail connection from point A to point B. We really look at this as, honestly, as a selling point, that potentially in the future, you can go completely off-street to Jefferson Pool, right? We're spending $6.5 million to upgrade Jefferson Pool, or Jefferson Park, Pool's another, another story. But again, so adding that connection, adding those is what the general population does want. And that is what is so hard about, about these topics, right? We hear the voices of the negative because people that may use this trail, if it were to be approved, in 10 years, that live in the next neighborhood that go through this, we're not hearing their voices right now. But that's why, again, we have those visions and we try to move that forward. And again, whatever happens, staff is moving forward then in that direction. And I want to be very clear about that.
And one last thing, something else I think I heard is that this is a way, these off-road connections are a way to connect the different, or to connect the parts of our community on either side of Oneida Street. And they are meant and will serve as local connections for the folks who live here. And the High Cliff part of this conversation is a more regional asset that is not going through this neighborhood.
That is, that is staff's understanding. I know when we do talk to the folks at the High Cliff and even East Central, that is their understanding as well. Again, Director Sackett, you're a little bit more involved with that. Would you agree?
Yeah, I totally agree that, you know, what some of the gallery.
She'll need the microphone.
Some of the gallery spoke earlier about the study and the survey that was done a few years ago regarding looking at options for the High Cliff Connection. And that connection through that neighborhood was considered. And then coming out of that survey and coming out of that study, decided to look at the Manitowoc Road and Highway 114 as the regional options. That doesn't necessarily mean then you abandon your local connections to get to those regional connections. So that's where this still ties into play, is that you're looking for local connections to get to the regional connections. So yes, we have, there is still a study, that feasibility study going on with the High Cliff Connection that's looking at Manitowoc Road and Highway 114 as that regional connection strictly for that.
Thank you.
Kirsten?
Thank you. Sorry. I had a couple questions. So I was looking at the map here of the bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And I'm curious what would, what would really change if instead of having an off, an off-street trail, that instead we used like an on-street path? I know in other I, I know in other parts of the city, we are proposing that as an option. I'm curious why, why, I mean, I, I understand wanting it to fit in with the rest of the trail, but I'm curious why that's such a, why that's more really seen as a problem in an area with such little vehicle traffic as this specific area does?
Director, you have any?
If I may, yes. And I appreciate you asking that question because I, I did want to speak to that. When we, from a public works perspective, when we are designing roadways, you do not, you do not design roadways for pedestrian walking accommodations on-street. It is, whether it's 500 cars or one car, the risk of an individual walking, getting hit by a car, however many cars that is, is still a high risk. The only on-street facilities we design for, on-street facilities, I can't recall if I said that correctly, are for bicycles. Because of the speed, they can go along with the vehicle and the impact is potentially lessened than if it were to be a pedestrian walking at five miles an hour versus a bicyclist at 15 miles an hour. So if you're not providing off-street accommodations, we cannot designate walking traffic to use that road as a traversable surface. It's not ADA accessible and it is not a designated walking area to be alongside road traffic. So just to put perspective as to our standards, our practices when we design roadways, the only ones we look at are when you're crossing the road, where we have the, you know, crosswalks.
I guess to add to that, Kirsten, if we put in painted bike lanes, that means that we likely won't have parking on that street either, which can be a, a issue for people that have guests over, that don't have enough driveway parking space. And, and just think about, I'm guessing you'll have kids someday, and think about your two five-year-old kids on their bike behind you. I know when I go with kids on bikes, they have this tendency to look at the squirrel and all of a sudden they're in the middle of the road. It's a lot safer for smaller kids to be on an off-street facility because it confines them in that space rather than a whole 30-foot wide road.
I would also like to add, if I could, I understand it's, it's a quieter area, intended to be that way. We have cul-de-sac ends, but I don't want us to forget, we have this Atkins development still going on. We have 90 lots that, let's say two cars per parcel, that's 180 vehicles potentially on a day-to-day going to and from their homes down Gosling Way. So I, just, just trying to put bigger picture out there, something to consider, in my opinion, I think, because traffic loads will increase when that is built out, however long that takes.
Again, this is time for the council to be debating. Have you finished?
I have one more question. I was curious, it was brought up by the gallery a few times, about a potential, about a potential issue with a property, a property that's owned by a private entity that may, may be difficult to build a path through. I was curious if we could hear from the directors about, just some more information on that, clarification on what, what that, I'm not super familiar with that specific issue, so just some information on that would be helpful.
Go ahead, Sam.
Certainly. So if the, the 2001 comprehensive plan, bike and pedestrian facility that was included in a communication, basically that, that gray area there between, oh, I'm forgetting the subdivision names, the Atkins subdivision and the Pond subdivision. So that was within a city of Manasha growth boundary. So everything south of Manitowoc Road, north of 10, and west of Lake Park Road was anticipated on coming into the city of Manasha, whereas we, we would not annex outside of that and we put in all the utilities. So that's why a lot of those streets kind of dead-end at the gray areas is because we had anticipated only nine years ago to continue growing throughout that area. So upon the, the Town of Harrison incorporating into the Village of Harrison, what that means is the city can no longer just annex properties. We have to come to agreement with, with the adjoining, adjoining municipality to basically get them to accept the, the detachment of that piece and for us to accept the attachment of piece. We recently just did that on a small piece of property, the Bubba's Pub piece on Racine Road, as well as in Ninth Street. Again, part of that development, right? So we had a development kind of come through and we worked through those conversations with the adjoining neighborhood to kind of make that happen. What I can say is, I wish I had a crystal ball. Properties get sold. Properties get sold all the time. Different owners have different interests. You know, while the current owner is saying, I'll, I'll never sell, I don't want to see that, I, I see it all the time. I, I grew up in a farm. My uncle, we have, you know, roughly 200 acres. My uncle sold 50 acres in the original farmhouse out of the blue last year. My grandpa sold another 15 acres that I thought would never, ever leave our family. Again, so these things do happen. And that's why, again, having this vision of how we want to grow is, is so crucial and so important because we're a municipality. We've been here 150 years, we're going to be here another 150. And we have to make sure we're not making short decisions, but long decisions. Because if we continue to make short moves, that's again, when we're starting to make really negative fiscal impacts, as well as staff does not have any direction of how we are supposed to go out and do our jobs.
Did that answer your question? Because I took your question differently.
I was, I guess I was more asking for clarification on like, what is the, what is the likelihood of us being able to, like, to work with the Town of Harrison to, to put the, that trail in there? I mean, what, I mean, like, realistically, what is the possibility of that actually being able to happen?
I try very, very hard not to say any negative comments. And, and what I can say is positively, opportunities arise all the time. Who would have thought two weeks ago Lakeside Book was going to be closing? Again, there's, without a crystal ball, you, you just really can't, can't commit to that one way or the other. What we can say, and again, that's what we have said, is we're looking for that east-west connection, that local connection for this. You know, again, if somebody came, knocked on his door and said, I'll give you a million dollars for this piece of property. I, I don't personally know Jim Bowdway. I do know Doug a little bit. I have, I have no idea if they would accept that or not. Again, those are, those are conversations that as, as a city that does not have the ability to, to annex it or to, to really push anything in that regards, we're not looking to, to stir any type of conversations or, or any type of feasibility that, you know, the city is, is taking a property because we just, we don't do that. So that's, it's very hard to answer your question because I really, I just don't know what the future holds.
I think to add to that, the connection to the east may be difficult, but the connection to the west will probably happen in the somewhat near future. And that connects those 200 houses in the Atkins subdivision, this whole Kernan neighborhood, all that stuff back to Jefferson Park, back to our downtown, back to all the other things within our community that helps bring this neighborhood into that community. So I turned your light back on. Are you done? Okay, good. Sorry. Anyone else? So right now, what's on the floor is a motion to amend the plan to remove both the sidewalk and the trail from this project. If we could have a roll call vote, please. So if you vote yes, that means that there will not be sidewalk or trail within this development area.
Four, three. Five, three.
So now we have the motion on the floor as amended. Do we have any other further discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is as amended. Oh, I'm sorry, Randy, did you have other discussions?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to make another amendment, please. I hope it doesn't take that long to make a decision. I'd like to make another amendment that we eliminate the improved street on Gosling Way. And I got the right word this time, Woodcrest Heights Road. Eliminate those new streets as far as the concrete, the curb and the gutter and the new street.
So would this be north of, is that Canvas Back?
Yeah, north of, north of Gosling Way.
So the only portion that would be left would be Gosling Way, north of, is that Canvas Back? I forget what the name of the street that there is. In the Atkins Development.
So you have, Gosling Way runs east and west. It comes off of Kernan Ave.
Correct.
And it transitions into Gosling Way Court.
Correct.
Gosling Way Court ends.
Yes.
And then off of Gosling Way, our way in, you have Woodcrest Heights that continues, that goes north.
Correct. So I want to eliminate the, the road for Woodcrest Heights and for Gosling Way and Gosling Way.
So you want to eliminate everything?
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing you say.
So you want to leave the court in there, right? Gosling Way.
No, he's saying everything.
Oh, you just want to eliminate the whole project?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Then you just vote no.
Okay.
I thought you wanted to leave Gosling Way Court in.
No, no, I didn't.
Okay.
Okay, so we can simply.
Then you just vote no.
Okay, that works out too.
Well, if, if you want to eliminate the whole project, that would be the way you do it, is vote no. Okay. What would be the?
Motion carries. Six, two.
Okay, moving on. Item L is appointments. There is one appointment to the Committee on Aging, if the council so does desire. Aldrin Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for your last appointment because I think the future mayor should be making these appointments of Roy, is it Meyer?
Yes.
To the Committee on Aging for a term of three, 1824 through four, 30 of 27.
So motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comment. Is there anyone who wished us to comment this evening? Sandy wants?
She was hiding.
I'll make it quick. I was hiding. Sandra to Bill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I just want to comment on the park resolution and the ordinance change. I just want to clarify because according to the police chief, he said that this would be aligned with neighboring communities and that's incorrect. The city of Appleton, Fox Crossing, and Nina do not allow dogs in parks other than on the trailer of the road. So whatever misconception that might have caused is a misconception. Excuse me. Also, the idea that if we increased social media and we do a flyer, which I think are all good ideas, do a flyer when someone takes out a dog license and have more communication on what the rule is, why haven't we been doing that now? Basically, we're changing an ordinance because it's not being enforced. I have a problem with that. That's not good government. To me, that's like saying, no one stops at the stop sign, so we'll just take the stop sign now. Because no one's enforcing it or code enforcement or other things. So I just ask you to think that over. People love their animals. I think dogs are great. But there are certain places that they're not appropriate. And there are individuals who are afraid of them, have allergies of them. If you have a picnic in the park with your small children, do you want to lay a blanket down that maybe the dog went underneath? So I think we made a mistake. We'll see what happens. I think this was pushed by a few people at Bruzun Vega or some friends of the mayor or some other people that want to see this. And the survey that the park board did, they had 70% or in favor of, in favor, but it was also 70% of them were dog owners. So that makes a difference. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Greg Omaszynski, 33 Sixth Street. I would just like to make a comment and ask if there's something that can be done. We have had kids in our neighborhood who like to ride up and down the middle of the street. Now, I know bikes are allowed on the street, but we have quite a few kids that are maybe five, 10 years old, they're riding up and down the streets, in the middle of the street, nuts. They don't, they don't move over for cars. Cars have to stop and wait for them. There are a few that there was, my neighbor actually called the police one night and said, hey, there's a kid on a, I don't even know, it was kind of like a Big Wheel, but it was smaller, and you're sitting in a car, you can't even see the kid on the road. The policeman came and said, well, there's nothing we can really do about it. He said, I'll stop and ask him not to do it, but that's all I can do. Well, you know how long that lasted? He drove away and they're back out on the road. Now, what we're concerned about is one of those kids is going to get hit and killed. Does it take that to do something about it? I would just like to ask the council, maybe, I don't know if we need a, a rule or anything, but would you please consider, I mean, we've got to do something about this. You know, and most of the time, talking about sidewalks, I would say 90% of the people that are on, that come down Sixth Street are usually walking in the road. So why do we have sidewalks, you know? But the kids, they, you know, and you see them all over town, you know, you'll, you know, you'll beep at them and they'll look at you and swear at you and they'll just keep going down the middle of the road. But especially, you know, the little ones, we've got to have some type of law or something to protect the kids and maybe make the parents a little more responsible. I know, I know the kids that were under, their mom threatened the lady next door for calling the cops. I mean, we got to do something. It's a safety issue. And I But the kids, they, you know, and you see them all over town, you know, you'll beep at them and they'll look at you and swear at you and they'll just keep going down the middle of the road. But especially, you know, the little ones, we've got to have some type of law or something to protect the kids and maybe make the parents a little more responsible. I know, I know the kids that were on there, their mom threatened the lady next door for calling the cops. I mean, we got to do something. It's a safety issue. And I really wish that, you know, the new board coming in will please take a look at that and see what we can do.
Thank you. Anyone else? One more, or at least one more.
Eli Wickman, 710th Street. I actually came up to say, hey, good job on dogs in parks. I know I'm on the park board and I'm incredibly biased and a dog owner, so that doesn't help. But I think, and I've heard this from a lot of people, that to continue with the analogy, if no one's stopping at stop, stop signs, why do we have them, take them down? Actually, what this does is put up a stop light. It changes the rules. It augments it and makes it a little more concrete. Like now we actually have codified leashes. Didn't have that before. This is, I think, a general rule that people are going to follow like more strictly because as a dog owner, I talk to a lot of other dog owners. I encounter a lot of other dogs. The last thing I want to do at all is let my dog loose around other dogs. I have two small pomerans, they will get eaten. I do not want that. So I think we made the right call and, you know, have a great idea about kids on bikes. Have you heard of trails? No, just kidding, just kidding.
Well, you don't get many on Sixth Street.
Yeah, no, but thank you for making the right decision on dogs and dog, in the parks.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
The city of Manassas is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassas residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manassaswi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding city of Manassas issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608. Contacting their city alderman, contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.